Y'all ready? Hi, Robert. How are you, love?
It's a new one?
Yeah, it did. Yeah, she did it just a couple of minutes ago.
Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody, and if I could ask you to please silence your phones at this time. We're calling the meeting to order, and because we are still in COVID mode and virtual, Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll, because I do believe Commissioner Bartz is joining us virtually. So to have on the record that she is present, could you call the roll?
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
I see.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Townsend?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Tipton, would you please lead us in the invocation?
I invite you to join with me if you're willing. Heavenly Father, we come with grateful hearts for this day and for the blessings that have come to St. Lucy County. We ask for your continued blessings on all those who are in harm's way in service to our country and our community. Father, we seek wisdom and discernment on the issues of the day, and ask that during this time together, our actions and our words will represent the best that is in each of us. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we begin, I would like to acknowledge that we do have command staff here from the Fire Department, and we also have with us in their room Mayor Hudson from the City of Fort Pierce. I apologize if I'm missing any other elected officials. The sheriff's office is here, I believe, correct in the back. So we do have representation from the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, and the mayor from the City of Fort Pierce. We're going to start with presentations. Mr. Tipton, at this time, if you and Mr. Spurber from the Health Department would like to do a presentation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, the meeting this morning is a special meeting of the board to consider an order regarding the wearing of face coverings in the county. This subject is in response to the growing COVID-19 positive cases, as well as the hospitalizations both in our county and around the state. The timing of this meeting was to give the board the option of considering stronger requirements for face coverings in certain circumstances before the July 4th holiday weekend. As the, as the board knows, the, the challenge that we have this morning is one of due, due to time commitments, and these are prior time commitments. And so we will begin this morning with a presentation of myself. It will be very brief. And then I will ask Clint Spurber, and he has physicians with him as well who would also present. So with that, let me begin by stating that the primary responsibility of local government is public health and public safety. This county declared a public health emergency on March 17th of this year to acknowledge and respond to the threats from COVID-19, also known as the coronavirus. This pandemic has hit every state in the nation, and we've seen around the world its impacts as well. But just in case we're feeling like this is a first for this country, on the screen is a picture from a 1918 football game with Georgia Tech, reminding us of the Spanish influenza and the use of face coverings more than 100 years ago. In St. Lucy County, like many counties in Florida, we've experienced a slow start to this pandemic. It seemed like maybe we had dodged a bullet, thanks to the stay-at-home orders. Unfortunately, the month of June has seen in our community a significant spike in cases and hospitalizations. We wanted to let the data drive our decisions, and the data is trending in the wrong direction. Testing has increased tremendously from the early days of this event. And while it's difficult to tie test results back to any given day, due to the timing of the lab to turn around the results, we are indeed seeing a higher rate of people testing positive. In other words, just the additional testing doesn't account for these higher rates. We are seeing more community spread, and I'm sure Mr. Spurber will speak to this a little bit further. Hospitalizations are a lagging indicator, and as the slideshow shows, the percent of COVID-positive patients is on the rise. Note that on May 18th, only 2% of hospital admissions were COVID-positive. One month later, this percentage has more than quadrupled to 8%. In response to these rising numbers, counties around the state have considered, and 15 counties are now requiring face coverings in some form or fashion. Indian River County will be requiring these on June 29th, and you're all familiar with Martin County's recent decisions. In addition to counties taking these actions, 44 cities have also taken actions to require face coverings. There are currently 16 states and territories addressing many mandatory face coverings, and that list continues to grow. I'm having a little problem here moving this forward. The last slide, so that's that one. There we go. This last slide is a look at the economic fallout from the coronavirus, focusing just on unemployment for Martin and St. Lucy counties. These rates and the speed at which they were achieved speak to a key part of the conversation today. The efforts to protect the health and safety in this event began really with the focus on flattening the curve so that our healthcare systems were not overwhelmed. We didn't want that to be another Italy, having to make life and death decisions due to a shortage of critical care beds and equipment. We didn't want our most vulnerable populations put into that position. We were also concerned, and remain so, about essential service workers and their ability to stay on the job as the cases rise. The speed at which this is moving in the community has the potential to bring critical services to challenging levels. While we may be okay with trash being picked up once a week, or maybe once every two weeks if the garbage truck drivers go out ill, we may not be so keen to see what happens in our 911 call center with our first responders or our food service workers. I was speaking with the Orange County Administrator two evenings ago, and he shared that 15% of the City of Orlando's Fire Department staff were out after having tested positive. That's a significant burden on the remaining staff and a cost to taxpayers with additional overtime. But one of the biggest impacts from these higher cases, and hospitalizations, and fatalities, is the damage to our business community. People spend more money when they feel safe, less so when they don't. If people don't feel safe and aren't coming into the stores and shops, they're not spending money, at least in the amounts that we're used to seeing. The best or worst example of that that I can think of right now is in terms of when people don't feel safe, is that of the New York Yankees and our own New York Mets. Their decision to abandon world-class training facilities in Florida to train in New York City because of the coronavirus fears is a remarkable turnaround from where we were just a few months ago. The bottom line is that this virus is going to be with us for a while, and it's our opinion that we need to find a better way to stay healthy, to keep our essential services going, and keep our businesses open. The ability to do this within, is within our control, but it's going to take a change of mind and behaviors to make that happen. So with that, I'm going to introduce Mr. Clint Spurber. He is the Administrator for the St. Lucy County Health Department, and ask him to share a few points.
While he's coming up, I'd also like to recognize that Representative Dolores Johnson and CEO of Tradition Cleveland Clinic, Mr. Rob Lord, has joined. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. Thank you, Howard. So I, I do want to speak about cloth mask, surgical mask, and other types of protections that have shown effectiveness to reduce the spread of coronavirus. So the use of cloth face coverings and masks is an important tool to help us control COVID-19 in our community. As the COVID-19 pandemic has spread across the world, the Centers for Disease Control, World Health Organization, and several well-designed studies have supported the efficacy of face masks as part of a system of community mitigation that does include social distancing, contact tracing, and quarantine to reduce COVID-19. These studies estimate that the use of face masks has contributed to a decrease of COVID-19 infection and deaths in many countries affected by the virus. Now, the face mask is worn to protect others from droplets generated by the mask wearers breathing, talking, laughing, sneezing, and coughing. The face covering and mask reduces the amount of concentration of infectious droplets expelled from the mask wearers' mouth and nose. The mask does not efficiently protect the mask wearer from those that are not wearing a mask. Now, it's very important. It's protection increases when all people are wearing face coverings and masks in situations when social distancing is not possible, or in addition to social distancing. Many people with COVID-19 are asymptomatic, yet infectious to others. I'm sure Dr. Ram Kapal will speak about that. In addition, people infected with COVID-19 are infectious from one to four days before symptoms do occur. So the use of face coverings and masks, if worn by all, would significantly hamper the ability to both the asymptomatic and the pre-symptomatic to transmit COVID-19 to others, and would ultimately decrease community transmission. There are many high-risk people among us who, if infected, are more likely to suffer complications and/or death. The wide use of face masks and cloth reduces the likelihood that infectious droplets will infect the highly fragile population. Those in long-term care facilities and the elderly among us are particularly susceptible to negative effects of COVID-19, which we have definitely experienced in this county. For us to reduce the burden of COVID in our community, a strong community commitment to the use of face coverings, masks, social distancing, and other mitigation measures must be implemented by all. If, if half of us wear masks and the other half do not, we will not significantly reduce the burden of COVID in our community. We know that we're all in this together, must protect each other, and those who are most vulnerable among us by using face coverings, masks, and social distancing. When you wear a mask or face covering, you are protecting others. The fastest way to improve the safety and quality of our lives is to wear masks, social distance, and to wash your hands. So as a state, what we have witnessed over the past few weeks is our counts have doubled and sometimes tripled since two weeks ago. In St. Lucy County, as of yesterday, we have 25, or 25, excuse me, 58 new cases. So that means that we are currently at 1,508 cases reported since March 20th with 45 deaths. Our community depends on taking action that will protect one another. So as Health Officer of St. Lucy County, I am in high support of the executive order. Now, a couple other things that we really do look at are the gating criteria. And I know weekly when I do share some of the updates as far as what does the county look like when we look at cases, what we also look at are infectious rates. So when we look at influenza-like illnesses that are reported to our three hospitals and COVID-like illnesses, we have seen those trends continue to go on an upward swing. Our case counts, as we know, have been increasing. Our positive, our positivity rates have also increased somewhat over the past few weeks. And the other main criteria that we look at is capacity to manage the COVID patients. And, you know, luckily, and I've mentioned this numerous times before, we are very lucky to have, you know, physicians like Dr. Ram Kapal, hospital systems like Cleveland Clinic and HCA that have an ability to manage complex patients, to be such a, a large system to move around patients and bring in equipment. It is very vital for us in this county. And from a department standpoint, being part of a statewide system of Department of Health with 15,000 employees and a lot of resources that we can bring in is very crucial to our response today and to move forward. Now, with cloth masks, what we have seen come down through Department of Health and also through emergency management in St. Lucy County alone is over 135,000 masks have already come down in the past couple of weeks. We have distributed all of them throughout the entire community, all the vulnerable populations, the churches, migrant farms, everywhere. We also requested and just received an additional 50,000 masks. So we have those that we will be pushing out as well. And that's all I have. Thank you.
While I have you, I'm still receiving calls into my office. Are you familiar with any places that are still doing the testing?
There are a ton of places that are still doing testing. So we, we do have Cleveland Clinic that does testing. Florida Community Health Center at both of their locations in the county is doing testing. I know our other hospitals are also doing testing for patients. There are a lot of primary care physicians doing it, urgent care centers. So there are definitely a lot of spots that are doing it.
I, thank you. I just want to take advantage of do this. And is Dr. Ram Kapal a part of your presentation?
I don't know if he's a part of our presentation. I defer to Howard on that.
We did have some hospital representatives that were scheduled to be here, and I said that they would probably be up next if they are here.
Okay, so is there, if you're a physician here and you're part of the presentation, can you raise your hand? Mr. Lord, would you like to speak today? Okay, so before we move on to public comments or anything, since we're still in the presentation, if you would like to come forward? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Chairman, Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for the opportunity. First, I would say that I, I agree with everything Mr. Spurber just said in terms of the effectiveness and the scientific data that suggests that there is a way to combat this illness. It does not have superpowers. If you walk in one of our hospitals, there's three things that we've said we want to know for sure. Number one, you have a mask. You don't have a fever. And number three, the last thing you're going to do is wash your hands. And if we do that and we socially distance, I think there's every reason to believe we can, we can recover as an economy, and we can drive down the transmission rate. But if we don't, we're all aware of the spike. And we've seen the direction that opening things up the way we've done it will take us and has taken us, and that is Tampa and Miami have now gone to mandatory masks. And I'm afraid that Texas will not be the last state to tell, in its four largest cities, all of its hospitals, that they have to stop doing elective surgeries again because there's not enough room in their hospitals. We don't want that to happen. We are in a strong position. We have a great organization, tremendous resources have been put at my disposal, our disposal, and, and so we can handle the patient load. But there's some stuff I think that you and, I would like to express to you and to the community. Couple of really important points. In talking to people around here, we are still of the opinion this is a disease that affects the elderly. They're the ones who get hurt by it, and everybody else is going to be okay, and that's not what is, is happening. First of all, what we're seeing is with infections locally, the age groups between, say, 50, 15 years old and 64 years old are, are far and away leading the, the elderly, and the 25 to 44 age group is leading the pack by a wide margin. And then 45 to 54 is nipping at their heels. We've heard speculation that patients, well, those patients aren't getting real sick. They don't wind up in the hospital. But in hospitalizations in our facilities, the 19 to 44 and 55 to 64, both considered low-risk groups, lead the pack in terms of getting so sick that it requires hospitalization. And you don't get in a hospital unless you're quite sick. Now, what we were hoping for, of course, was that in the summertime, as happens with some viruses, the flu being one of them, that this thing would, that that would have a positive impact. And while it's still early in the summer, I think it's going to be safe to say that's not going to happen. This is not going to go away because of the heat. We've had incredible heat, and we're still seeing an incredible number of infections. What we did see was a gradual increase of COVID in hospital admissions in the month of May. And then in June, our inpatient census dropped from 20 to 60. Just take that in. Now we're at about 50 right now. And that's between our two, our two hospitals, in Stuart and at Traditions. That's not just Traditions. And we're keeping most of those patients alive. I'm incredibly proud of our team. Our ICU physicians are amazing. They're, some of the treatments that we do have, mind you, none of these treatments are a cure. We're treating symptoms, trying to help keep people alive while their body develops the ability to fight this off with antibodies. But don't let that mislead you. These patients, some of these patients are having the, the significance of the injury to their lungs and other, and not to mention blood clots and other things that have come up for some patients. That won't discriminate based on age. Those young people may live the rest of their lives, living with the consequences of this, this condition. It is a very serious illness, potential lifelong impact on the lives of those infected. And as I said, we've been keeping people alive, but if I didn't stop right here and say one death is too many into the families and loved ones of those who we have lost, our hearts and sympathies go out to all of them. But as I said, again, we can defeat this, this disease. I keep coming back to that this is not an insurmountable enemy. But we have to function as a team. And that's one of the big challenges I see in this country today. It is unfortunate that somehow this has become politicized. But what I would remind all of our citizens is that the greatest generation, as we call them, during World War II, there were so many things required of our people, and we rationed just about everything, and, and huge sacrifices were made, and it was considered the patriotic thing to do. And I would very respectfully suggest to all citizens today that it's not only the courteous thing to do and being respectful of others, but it is the patriotic thing to do. It is how we're going to, if we wear masks, if we socially distance, if we observe good and frequent hand hygiene, we can turn this thing around and, and keep our economy moving, which we desperately need to do. And to be very clear, our organization wants to see an economic recovery. We are not saying this as a political statement or to be a naysayer. This is the right course to recovery in, in, not only in our view. And I, and I again would, would just suggest to you this last thing. You may find, you will find, I've been subjected to some of it, some very strong disagreement within our community. But in 30 years of working in healthcare locally, first as a lawyer, so I was involved in a lot of these things because they were disputes, I, I can't remember a time where I could say 95% of the physicians agree on anything. But today, you're, you'd be hard pressed to find any medical professional who doesn't want to see more stringent requirements. So the failure to take action means more people will be hospitalized, more people will test positive, and this will continue to go on. And the Cleveland Clinic Traditions Hospital supports any efforts by this commission that will help us stem the tide. Again, I appreciate the opportunity as always to present to you, and I'd be honored to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you very much. Would you like to go ahead and speak since we're in presentation, and then I'm going to go back to the board?
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Dr. Moti Ram Kapal, and I have been in this community now for over 20 years. It's my privilege to be here, and I completely agree with the previous two presenters. So in January, when this story started to evolve out of Wuhan, and I remember giving a lecture, and I give lectures all over the country. I've established a research center in Fort Pierce that is considered one of the leading research centers in the country right now for infectious disease, for HIV. We have published in over 200 clinical trials, and we are considered incredibly one of the leading sites. And I have five or six new clinical studies now for coronavirus. But going back to January, when this story started to leak out of Wuhan, and I presented a lecture in January 26th, and recalled telling the physicians in the group, this is going to be the biggest thing we're going to experience in our lifetime. And why did I say that? I said that because this is a virus that we saw originally 15 years ago. And even though it did not spread as rapidly as this one has spread, when a city of 10 million people decided to shut itself down completely from the world, that's a warning signal to infectious disease physicians. It's a warning signal to epidemiologists around the country and around the world. And five months later, I've treated over 500 patients at least now in this community. I'm there every single day. I've not, I haven't had a day off in like two to three months now. Dr., Mr. Lord will be completely aware of that story. I presently have over 50 patients in the ICUs and the hospitals, in the three or four hospitals. I have a team of three physicians, two nurse practitioners. And we work diligently, assiduously, and in a very comprehensive manner. What has changed in our treatment strategy is, one, we have plasma. Two, we have a medication called remdesivir. Three, we have, we have learned about prone ventilation. We have an incredible team of nurses, physicians, intensivists. Everyone is giving you 500% right now. But there's going to be a time when that is going to be a strain on us. February, March, April, May, June. When New York was peaking, we were still rising our numbers, but we're steady. Now we're peaking. And it's a sad story to see how hard we're working. I had a patient in my clinic yesterday said, oh, I have asthma. I'm an HIV patient. I don't want to wear a mask. Can you write me a letter? I looked at her and I said, really? Said, not to wear a mask. I said, really? Do you think about what we do every single day in the hospital? Wear the mask, protect ourselves, concerned about my elderly mother who's 82 years old. Take, you know, considering taking this home to her every single day. It's a fear that healthcare workers have been dealing with for three months. And to have a community, people say that they, oh, you shouldn't wear a mask because we don't have the science behind it. Yes, it's a long tunnel. We just entered this tunnel. We're just going in this tunnel now. There's going to be a light at the end. But what's that light going to look like? There's going to be vaccines. There's going to be pills. We're not there yet. We're not there yet, but we have to prevent somehow. You look back at the 1918 epidemic, what got us through that epidemic was masks, pandemics. We look back at the 2008 H1N1 story, what got us through that? We had a vaccine, we had masks, and we protected ourselves. This story reminds me of the trenches I was in in the 1990s and 3200s when HIV patients were dying in front of me, and I felt helpless. I feel helpless today. I feel helpless that I can give them plasma, I can get remdesivir, but patients are staying in the hospital longer than we expected. It is two to three weeks now, 14 days, 20 days. Just when they're about to go home, they end up back in the van later again. So this is a challenging story for us, and we have only one strategy right now, prevent new cases, to slow this down, and that's wearing masks and social distancing. If we had vaccines right now, if we had pills to prevent this, if we had other treatment strategies, I'll say, yes, let's look at those. But there are a lot of people out in the community saying, well, we don't need to wear a mask, it harms us. How does it harm you? You're going to be two or three hours around someone, you can be at home, you don't need to wear, I mean, you can control your home environment. But when you're in public, there's so, we know there's what we call super-spreaders, certain individuals who can spread coronavirus much more than others. We don't know who they are. They're pretty much asymptomatic, they cough, they sneeze, it's spread. It's spread pretty much in this room very, very quickly. That's what we call the super-spreaders. We don't know who, you know? So when you look at the numbers changing so rapidly in the last two to three weeks, we need to consider the community, we need to consider the hospital system that has really been really stretched to the seams, the healthcare workers who are really given, you know, 200, 300% every single day. This is a challenge, so I implore you to consider this. This is a very, is an important strategy to prevent this virus from the scientific aspect of it. I know there's social concerns, there's financial concerns, but from a healthcare perspective, it's very important, when we look back at the history of viruses and pandemics, the one thing that works initially, until we get a vaccine, until we get a treatment strategy, is using masks, social distance, hand washing, everything we're stressing today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Dr. Ramgopal, I have a great deal of experience in, with you and other doctors in the HIV world. I was the chairman of the AIDS Research and Treatment Center of the Treasure Coast back in the day, has since evolved. I know you to be an expert in this field. You raised the issue that HIV and AIDS has evolved. You were experiencing that and became an expert in that years ago. How, if you can, provide the parallels of what this virus is doing and what HIV and AIDS was? HIV and AIDS, back when it was first found, was infectious and it was unknown as to how transfer happened. Today, we know how the transfer happens. We know that education has been created to actually educate folks on how to reduce the opportunity for infectious opportunities for other transmission. So that being said, do you see this, and again, it's taken 30 years to create the education, the treatments, to actually maintain the health of HIV patients and those who actually go to full-blown AIDS. And I think it's important to have that conversation about how your experience has gone from that to where we are today, asking for minor protections to protect an entire community.
That's a great question. When you look back at, you know, the HIV epidemic, we wouldn't even go in a patient's room without masks and gongs and the whole, you know, protection. And then we begin to understand the evolution of this virus, that this is not a respiratory transmitted virus, you won't get it from saliva, as we've seen, we've seen many, many hundreds of different clinical trials. But when you look back at the 80s or 90s, we didn't have a PCR test, we didn't know how to replicate viruses. It used to take us four to six weeks to grow the culture of a virus. It used to take us another two to two years to get a medication out, you know, developed. Right now, when you look at the rapidity of the work that's been done around this coronavirus, one, we know it's a respiratory transmitted virus; two, what surprises us about this virus is now a systemic virus. It can affect your kidneys, affect your heart, infect, you know, affects your intravascular circulation. But the rapidity of the research that's evolving right now, there's over 200 to 300 clinical studies, there's about 10 vaccines. The movement towards getting this answered, in my personal opinion, whereas it took us 15 years to get really good treatment for HIV, I think in about six to nine months, we'd probably be really getting adequate treatment. I'm not saying a cure, but we'd probably have early vaccines, we'd probably have early treatment strategies, that we have less hospitalizations, less transmission, less of everything we're seeing today. But it's to get to that point, it will be our challenge. Like patients who were in the early era of HIV, they said, I don't want to take AZT, but AZT took them to the next level, the next drug, to the next drug, to the next drug. And that's where we are right now with this pandemic. We are starting four new trials in this community in the next week, one of which you will be here is from a company called Regeneron, is to prevent transmission of this virus as well. There's a lot of really cutting-edge still work that's being done around the world, not just in this country, in Europe, around the world, there's a lot of different clinical trials. So the good news is that there is light at the end of the tunnel. We don't know how long this tunnel is. We're hoping that by the end of the year, we'll have some vaccine strategy, some treatment strategy that can be even, like we take Tamiflu today for influenza, whereas influenza would have killed about 20% of people, we don't. It doesn't anymore because we have Tamiflu, we have treatment, we have vaccines. We're hoping in about six to nine months, it'll be at least the one, you know, phase one of this story. And it will probably take another two to three years before we really get medication like a Tamiflu or get medication like a vaccine that we can consider very effective or very useful. So that's where the comparison with HIV.
Well, and then that is actually body fluid transmission, so there has to be close contact. And today, all medical providers have gloves, masks, you protect yourself from needle sticks and things of that nature because bloodborne communicative disease occurs in that, in that manner. So here, you're saying today that this is through the air.
This is through the air.
And so you don't have to actually physically touch a person in which to transfer the infection of the virus.
That's completely correct, and I think that story took a while to really evolve. We were saying, okay, it's moisture on your hands, it's being aware, it can spread that way, but we're also aware that this virus is aerosolized, and usually coronavirus does not stay in the air long. But this particular strain of the coronavirus is staying in the air longer, and we thought that normally most coronaviruses, the heat will, will have a decrease in transmission in this period of time. We're not seeing that. This virus is behaving completely different from everything we have said it would be. I recall in February, authorities are saying, oh, this virus is not going to go to humans, it's not going to transmit that much. Lo and behold, you're wrong. Oh, this virus is not going to be aerosolized. Lo and behold, you're wrong again. This virus is going to just stay in the respiratory tract. Lo and behold, you're wrong. So this virus has completely confused the medical community, it's completely confused the scientists, and it's embarrassed many, many people who think that this is the way to go. But one thing we do know is, again, going back to 1918, going back to previous times, the masks, hand washing, that's the only protection now that we have. I mean, even with, as you said, with HIV, that's mainly a blood transmission, that's, you know, transmission of bodily fluids, this is respiratory tract, coughing, you know, much more, and it's small droplets, not like tuberculosis where it's, you know, different droplet size and different, you know, particle size. And this seems to be much easier to be transmissible than any of the things I've faced, I've experienced in my life. And I, my infectious disease career goes back to the 1980s as a medical student, taking care of HIV patients, dengue outbreaks, malaria, I went to Haiti after the earthquake, I worked with horrendous conditions, cholera. So I've seen pretty much everything you can imagine in the world of infectious disease. I've seen poverty in third world countries with infectious disease, but this is nothing I've ever experienced or thought I would see at this stage in my career.
Do you find it interesting that it was just six to eight months ago, we had a hepatitis A outbreak, and the issue was to wash your hands and do all the proper things, and all of a sudden now, with all the things we're doing today, hepatitis A seems to not be a major issue right now because everybody got vaccinated, they washed their hands more frequently, so...
Because we have treatment strategies, and that was not a respiratory transmission. This is respiratory. This is, to some extent, aerosolized, and that's what is very fearful. And like, if you look at it, healthcare workers going into a room with someone with coronavirus, we wear a mask, we wear double mask, we wear a shield to protect us, we gung. You look at us and we are there 12 hours a day in those rooms. So for the community, you know, to look at, say, we don't need to wear a mask, just spend a day with us, come see what we're doing every day to save a life. We exert energy, the time, the work, and the protection we use. Why are we protecting ourselves so much if we know so much about, because there must be, you know, concern within ourselves?
Dr. Ramgopal, I thank you for the exchange of information and thank you for the leeway.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you everyone. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to come back to the board, and I need to have some conversation with the board, and if Mr. McIntyre, you would please join in. I know that it's been a short notice and just a couple of days that the community's had the opportunity to speak. I, I know that not just me, but the other commissioners have received over hundreds of emails and phone calls, and so the conversation, I think, needs to be today before we move further because of a time constraint where we're going to move forward with our public comment, are they going to be read into the record and then everybody speaks? So could you kind of give us some guidance on where you...
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. We typically, and the law provides for public comment before the board takes action. We have, as you indicated, a great deal of remote public comment. Those are voicemails, emails, that we have typically read into the record. We'll need to decide at the appropriate time what to do with that because I think that's going to expand. We wanted to get this in front of the board quickly, as we had certain people that were presenters here that won't be here next week, and so we wanted to get that out. I don't, I think the board tried to accommodate that as best they could with their own schedules, but there are certain members that are going to have to leave, as I understand it, by 11:00, 11:30. So we won't be able to hear all the public comment that has been transmitted remotely, and certainly there are a number of people in the audience as the board can see. So what we, what we may want to consider is deferring this till a time where the public can adequately, there's enough time for the, for the, for the remote comments to be considered, read, if nothing else, by the board in the privacy of your office or at home, and the voicemails and those sort of things. And so I know Mr. Tipton has been consulting with, with a potential date, so you might want to consider doing that. I don't think you're going to get through public comment by 11:00, and that's, that's a problem. I don't think you'll be able to take action at this point in time.
Mr. Tipton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, the amount of public comment and public interest in this subject has certainly expanded well beyond what we had originally anticipated. And so we are looking at your calendars and looking at the date of Wednesday, July 1st at 2:00 PM here in these chambers as a possible date for your consideration.
Madam Chair, we have all of the records. I have been watching and reading and listening to all of the public comment that has come through my office. The ones I haven't gotten to are the ones that may have gone through the general box. And as part of the public record, they can be placed in the public record by the clerk, excuse me. So I think that that's an important part. We have folks here in the audience that have taken the time to come here, and I think that they should have the ability to speak to us today. I understand that due to the time constraints and the inability to pass an ordinance today is an issue. However, if a hurricane or an earthquake were to occur today, Mr. Tipton has the ability to act on his own, to provide an order, executive order. I hope that he will consider that after this meeting and hearing all the information that has come forward. Ultimately, there are folks here that want to have something to say, and I think we should listen.
Does anybody else have any? Commissioner Mitchell, Commissioner Hutchinson, Commissioner Barnes?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Zdowski, I appreciate your comments and, and the fact that the meeting was called 48 hours ago, and there were situations where some of us were not able to change our schedules, the things that needed to be taking place, which put the time constraints on. But the fact that, like you, I think all of us have been reading as each email and phone callers, they're coming through. But in order to let the rest of the public be aware of it, because that's some of the complaints I've seen, is that there was not enough notice for them to get in here, to take off work and come through, I have no problem with moving this till Wednesday or whatever, was it July 1st? To do it, but I also think, as far as opening public comment, and this is a Dan question, I think once we start that, I know I need to be out of here by 11:30, and I don't know, do you start with the stacks first? That's a question that's, you know, that we've already gotten, have to be read into the record, or how we're going to do that? I mean, we can sit there and debate this till 11:30. I think there's another commission that needs to leave, from what I've been told, needs to leave at 11:00. This issue is, to me, is important enough that it's going to require, it needs to have the entire board here, not pieces of the board. It also needs to have the ability for the public to be heard. I don't even know if the public has had enough time to read the exact ordinance, because there's two that are in effect. And to me, I'm going to, I don't support the idea in, Howard, don't take any of this personal, of putting that on the county administrator's shoulders. It doesn't belong there. It belongs with this board. And I agree, he does have the power to do that, being under the emergency orders that we're in. But that's not how this board has worked in the past. And I have no guarantee, we worked in that past on little things, not something of this So that part I wouldn't agree to.
Well, I certainly have always listened to public comment regardless of how long it's ever taken. And the fact is that we have an infection rate that is now spiraling, and the longer we do nothing, worse it will get. We heard from medical professionals, scientists, and, and we've heard from the public as well. The fact is, is that there are going to be those who are for and against, and that's why we have a representative government for us to make a decision. I agree with you that the whole board should be here to hear it, should be a part of this. And the other side of this thing is, is that the businesses, regardless of what happens today, I would encourage businesses to move forward with the provisions in, in either of the orders to protect their customers, to keep their business open. As part of this conversation, it's about trying to keep our businesses open, the economy open, people and jobs. I don't know how long unemployment's going to be available for people. Those monies are going to dry up some, someday soon. So to be able to keep business in business, wear a mask. To keep people alive, wear a mask. Save a life, wear a mask. The life you save could be yours. And, and I don't want to get, you know, into this in a political thing. It's not, it's not political. There's not, there's not a political issue about a virus that's killing people and being spread at an alarming rate. So we talk about it from up here all the time, and when we come to a decision, when we're on the budget, and when the sheriff comes in and says, I need X amount of dollars, and the number one thing we say is, we're here for life, health, and safety. That's the number one thing that we do. We are at that place today, life, health, and safety. And so I would recommend, if we can't move forward with business today, come back on Wednesday, have the clerk and staff put all of these right into the record in the meantime, and then when we come back on Wednesday, we have the full hearing, and there should be in the Dan, will we have the time? Because I know there's a time issue with an ordinance in the amount of time for public comment. Will we meet that criteria by Wednesday?
Yes, actually, what we have in front of us today is two emergency orders that the county administrator would normally sign, but the county administrator wanted board input before he went ahead and signed those. I'm suggesting, in addition to those two, that we consider on Wednesday an emergency ordinance as an alternative to one of the other emergency orders. And the reason why, I think, is to provide for civil penalties rather than criminal penalties. I think that's a discussion the board should have as an alternative. Our perspective, and I'll use the analogy of code enforcement, is we really are about compliance. And that's really what we want here with, with the proposal, if the board decides to do that. We really just are about compliance. We're not interested in penalties and arrests and, and things like that. So a civil penalty may be a better option. So a civil penalty may be a better option for the board to consider than a, than a criminal penalty. These are provided by state law. So an emergency ordinance, I'm going to suggest that we put that on the agenda for Wednesday as well as an alternative. We can also consider a regular ordinance, but that won't be able to be done on Wednesday. So I think the, the Wednesday will, will provide some additional options for the board to consider. That may be better than what's in front of you now.
And Madam Chair, to continue with the thought process, you know, we are dealing with, with the budgetary item today as well. Last year, this county submitted $4.7 million to the state for our Medicaid contribution. This entire state is peaking. And there's a calculation that happens at the state level that provides for an invoice that comes back to the county. And it's complicated, but the fact is that every county contributes to the Medicaid side of, of the bill. And so as this, as this state continues to have Medicaid costs, because I don't know how many go up to now, a million, two million, I don't know, it's just spiraling. But the fact is, 4.7 million last year without a virus. We've, we've budgeted 5.1 million this year for Medicaid. And I assure you, with the 1,200 cases that are in there, 2,000 cases that we have in St. Lucie County alone, whatever that calculation is going to be, we might as well start looking at $10 million for that budget. You got folks that want to lower the mileage rate and reduce our cost of a budget. But we're looking to try and, you know, just simply reduce our costs by wearing a mask? We can save taxpayers millions of dollars by keeping people out of the hospitals. We can keep people from being dead by simply wearing a mask. We're not asking you to be in a bubble. Back to the John Travolta days and the kid in the bubble. It's not what we're asking for. We're asking for you to help us keep our businesses open. Wear a mask, save a business. I see business owners in there, in, out here already. There are going to be people who make a decision to go into a restaurant or a local facility because those business owners are taking the health of the customer into account. Which is why I'm asking today, if we can't move forward, I'm encouraging businesses to put the provisions in place regardless of an order. Save your business, save your employees, save your customers. I don't like wearing this mask either. And I have COPD. So I understand the issue about trying to breathe through the mask. It ain't easy. But I don't want to be dead. And I don't want to affect somebody else. I was sick in December and it took a whole month to get over. And I didn't even have the virus. I went and had the antibody test because I thought back in December I may have had it. I didn't.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Mitchell?
I can agree with both sides if that makes any sense. But I agree with Commissioner Hutchinson that we all should be here on something that's, is important as this. And I will agree with you, Franny, that we should all be here to make that vote. And if it's Wednesday at 2:00 P.M., I had scheduled to go away with my family. I will come back for it. It's that important to me. But I just want to read a little something that I put my thoughts in and we'll, we'll go on from there. I know we're going to get back to this now on July 1st, but I'd like to make a point on this whole conversation. First, let, our community is annually one of the most top retirement destinations for people who want to enjoy their golden years in our paradise. We know that as an age, as we age, we develop underlying health conditions. It just happens. My mom is 94 years old. She's in Tradition Hospital today with pneumonia. That's what I worry about. So from a public health perspective, our elders, who I was taught to respect, need our help during this crazy time. But if that doesn't motivate you, remember, these are the same retirees. With them comes an incredible amount of wealth from work, lifetimes of working and saving so they could spend their money here in St. Lucie County. They are, they are wealth importers and a key driver of our economy. So if you're a business, you should take time to understand this point. Retirees are importers of wealth and key to business. I hope we can come together as a community and get our heads around what we're dealing with. This is a pandemic and reasonable steps to help slow the spread, protect our hospitals from being overrun, keeping essential services going, keep our economy open, and protect our elders needs to be discussed. I was pleased that Dan had mentioned about civil, not criminal. We need to educate. We don't need to find people and lock them up. That is, it goes against my grain to mandate anything. I'm telling you that right now. But we're in a pandemic and I want to hear from every, every person who has a, a voice and to be heard. So I will support Franny on, or Commissioner Hutchinson's. I apologize for doing this Wednesday at 2:00 P.M. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Commissioner Barnes, do you have any comments?
It's hard to go after, after those two presentations. I want to say, first of all, I believe that Commissioner Zdowski mentioned the political side. And the fact that it should not be a political item. This is a public safety crisis as we've never seen before. This, um, this ordinance will certainly help with our economic development. As both, I think all three of you said, as important as it is for us to all be together, businesses need to realize, people are frightened to go in there. It also affects their staff. If you can't keep a staff, you can't keep in business. And we want to see those businesses come back and thrive. Our job is health, health, safety, and welfare. I believe very strongly that that is our job. And coming back on Wednesday, this, I appreciate that there are a couple of people who will be on vacation next week and are making a special trip and effort so that they will be here and we'll all be together. But I think that it is very important that we address this and we address it before the holiday. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just need to follow up. You know, I, I just can't believe we're, we don't have the support right this second. Just surprises me. No, no end. But we can mandate and lead by example by ensuring that our employees are safe. We can mandate for our county operations to be masks and mandatory. Is that correct, Mr. McIntyre and Mr. Tipton?
Yes, sir. And at the, at the right point today, the, the chair is going to ask me my, my thoughts on that. And I will, I will share them with the board. But, but we actually do have that authority and we'll be moving in, in that direction.
I will wait for them. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, because that's, that's where I was going to go next. So, Mr. Tipton, would you?
So to that point, Madam Chair and Commissioners, under an executive order that I will be signing later today, we will be requiring for all county facilities, these are county facilities and no other facilities, but for county facilities, I will be requiring the, the face coverings for everybody who will be entering our facilities. Currently, we're, we're taking the temperatures of folks coming in. We're asking them some basic health questions. We're strongly recommending the use of face coverings. They will be required effective Monday morning when we come to work.
Do you have a question?
I, I just, I just had a thought in my head, you know, just earlier, I said those businesses that will take the CDC guidelines and, and move to more stringent opportunity, they'll be those businesses that choose not to. But, you know, from a contact tracing standpoint, we'll be able to see which businesses have, you know, worn masks and, and done the thing or not. Because if your customers are, are being infected in your business because you haven't done the thing, at least contact tracing will be a little easier to find who went to a certain location.
And, and the key for our move, Commissioner, too, is, is, you know, again, essential services. We, you know, we think about our permit technicians, our planning technicians, our building inspectors, our, Mr. Kraft as, as frontline folks, giving out titles, helping people purchase vehicles. All of those things help keep that economy going as well. And so we, we look at it from a central service provider. We want to make sure that we're here to provide those services. So that's why we're taking this action.
Well, I just, again, I just want to make sure that we, we have coverage. If we lose, you know, firefighters, do we have, we have opportunities to work with other counties to bring firefighters in? Or law enforcement, or 911 workers, or people to, to do trash collection? To operate, you know, our road and bridge, keeping roads from being flooded? And that's, that's going to be a significant issue for us. I'm glad that you've entertained the idea of, of making it mandatory for our staff to keep them safe. And again, I go back to the cost associated with, you know, what will happen when we start to lose staff? And we have to expend additional millions of dollars in overtime? And again, the, the whole Medicaid cost, you know, 5.1 million budgeted for 2020, 2021. We're going to have to rethink that number. And I don't know where we're going to find the, the information, but that's going to have to be a part of our, our consideration in this budget.
Okay, so Mr. McIntyre, I know that there's been a lot of conversations. So I, I guess what we first need to decide is, are we going to continue with where Commissioner Zdowski is wanting to go? Or are we going to move and have this meeting adjourned? And then we will pick up on Wednesday? And then at that point in time, I think we need to discuss, are the public comments that have come into us, are they going to be read into the record or are they going to be submitted for the record? Because I think that's part of the issue, Commissioner Zdowski, is, like, and even if we continue to move forward right now today, there, there's emails that are public record that we've seen, but because they're public record, they have to be submitted into the record. So I think the first question is, are we going to, should we decide right now, are these going to be read? Or are they going to be submitted so that we have that out of the way?
Well, I'd suggest you defer that to Wednesday because you won't know the magnitude of those.
This is why I'm asking.
If they're substantial. This is going to be one of those circumstances where we, we need to waive reading them into record just from a practical standpoint. We can certainly acknowledge them. The, the Wednesday will give the board an opportunity to read all of them and listen to voicemails, all of that. There'll be more coming presumably to do that. I, I think, again, the, the Wednesday will allow you to have full public comment remotely, in person, which is what we, we, we want to have. We want to make sure the public has an adequate opportunity to be heard. And, you know, we're at 11 o'clock right now. So that won't be able to be heard with, with a full board. You're not going to have, that, that's not happening today. So from a staff perspective, I don't know if Mr. Tipton agrees with this. Hopefully he does. I think we recommend that you continue the hearing or this meeting until Wednesday, July 1st at 2:00 P.M. We'll also re-advertise it in, in the website and the, the media. We'll make sure that we do that as well, just in an abundance of caution, to pick up those folks that perhaps didn't get notified the first time. That will give us an additional ability to let the public know what we're doing.
Okay. So I, I just want to briefly state that to, to all of you, Commissioner Zdowski, I, I agree 100% with you. However, not only is it our duty to take care of the health, safety, and welfare of the people, it's also our responsibility to let everybody be heard.
And I'm okay with that.
And, and so for me, I have to concur with Commissioner Hutchinson that I'm grateful to even those of you that took the time to be here today. But I just don't think 48 hours is enough time. I think that it's been rushed. And I want everybody to be afforded the right to be able to be here and be present and be heard. And so for that reason, I support that we allow this to continue, at least through Wednesday, so that everybody has had the right to speak up and say how they feel about it and voice their opinions. So I support you, Commissioner Hutchinson, in moving this forward into Wednesday. So thank you. But again, Commissioner Zdowski, I, I agree with you 100%. And it doesn't mean that we're not going to go in that direction. I just think we need more time for everybody to collaboratively have our thoughts together. So, so I just want to bring it back to you, Mr. McIntyre. So at this time, should we have a motion to go ahead and have the meeting moved to Wednesday? And then come back and then move forward with the executive order that Mr. Tipton is going to put in place for the building?
No, I don't think, I don't think you can take any action, action today. Mr. Tipton is going to do that on his own without board, board direction. He's just decided to do that on his own, as I understand it. He's.
That is correct, but it will come back to you for ratification and discussion at your next credible meeting.
So that there's clear understanding of everything? Because there's been so many moving parts in conversation today. Effective today, you are going to be doing an emergency order.
That, that applies only to county-owned facilities and not anything else? That will, effective Monday morning, require the ma, the use of a face covering if you are going to enter a county facility?
Okay. And that's what I basically wanted. I wanted it out there that it's effective Monday and it's going to be in the county building. So effective Monday, that's going to be the executive order that's going to come out today. So now we need a motion to take this.
To, to hold a special meeting on Wednesday, July 1st at 2:00, 2:00 P.M. To consider public comment, additional testimony on the issue of the emergency order requiring face coverings in certain circumstances beyond the county buildings. And I'm also going to add on the, that agenda, an emergency ordinance for consideration that would provide for civil penalties in lieu of criminal.
And also I want to clarify for the thing is the, excuse me, ma'am, I have to ask you to please, and then the, Mr. McInt-
The way it's written doesn't.
As drafted, the county buildings do not cover schools.
Right, the school, yeah, the school is, we have no regulation over them. And so this is just strictly county facilities, just like we have no jurisdiction over the sheriff's department buildings, the school board, they are their own board.
Or their cities.
And the cities, the same as the cities. The cities are, they're going to make their own decisions effectively until we make it a county-wide thing. Okay, ma'am, I, I have to stop you only because this is recorded and it has to come to the microphone. And we can't do this because this is a recorded thing. So, so, so my other question was, because there are people that are here and we're not going to move forward with this today, is there a way that if they can't be here and they don't, they're not comfortable having it emailed in, they want to be heard, can they still call in? Is there a way to call in on Wednesday? That they could call in if they're at work or wherever they're going to be and then?
Well, I don't think we provide some live calls.
We're not doing that, okay.
We can take a voicemail and, and, and transcribe that, but we, we can't do the live interactions.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Dan, I just want to clarify your statement as to part of the motion. It's a continuation of this meeting, is that correct? Because I think that that's where we are. You made it sound as though we're going to do another posting. I thought this was going to be a continuation.
It is a continuation, but I'm also recommending that we post it as, as a special meeting, just for the public's benefit. So we have it on, in other words, normally when we continue, we don't re-advertise. We don't re-notify. I'm suggesting we continue it, but we also put it on the, on the media that we're, we're holding the meeting on July 1st at 2:00 P.M. So everybody will have the opportunity to note. And we do that today, if we can do it, start it today.
Madam Chair, I just want to make clear for the record, my position was not to not have public comment, absolutely. I wanted public comment, for sure.
Yeah, no, I know that, yeah.
It's just unfortunate we have the time, time constraint today.
Well, because the, but it's not the time constraint. With the people that have sent in, we are going to have to decide if we're going to hear all of them and if they're going to be read into the record. And so if it goes to the direction, read into the record, these have to be read before they even come and speak or whatever we decide.
Well, I just was hoping to hear from them, but that's okay.
Yeah, so we need to decide, are we going to just submit these to the record or are we going to read them into the record? So there's a lot of moving parts to this. So, Mr. McIntyre, we're, we're okay, ready to make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
So is?
Go move.
Mr. McIntyre? So I need you to, I need you to weigh in on this.
Yes, ma'am. That, that really is, is up to the board. We, we have time constraints. We're not able to, to stay.
Okay. We have... I have to have everybody to please be quiet because this is a recorded meeting. You have to state your name for the record so that you can be heard. And we're trying to get legal on this. So you cannot do anything until we have a legal representation. We decide the way that we're going to move forward with this. So, Mr. McIntyre, would you like to weigh in? Excuse me, sir, you have to wait your turn. We're still... We are still having conversations with our legal counsel, Mr. McIntyre.
Right. Madam Chair, I think the issue is the board's time constraints. We want public comment before we take action. That's why we're continuing the hearing to July 1st at 2:00. So we can add additional public comment. We're concerned about the notice, the notice, make sure that it's adequate. So...
So, okay, so my other question is, if we go... It doesn't matter to me, we're going to have to make a decision. I'm just saying that for those that have to leave, because they have prior meetings and stuff that couldn't be changed or gotten out of, if public comment is heard, then we would move on to the irregular agenda to continue this meeting if we don't, you know, adjourn right now. Is there a quorum? Do you have to have a quorum sitting up here to decide?
I will make myself available to listen to the public comment until this time is completed. I understand that other commissioners have to go. I don't know if there's going to be three, but I will say on the record that I will sit here until every person in this room has an opportunity to speak.
Do you have to have the three commissioners?
Thank you, Chris. Thank you for standing by your oath, brother.
If that's what the board is willing to do, that's fine. You will not have, you know, all the board members here.
I mean, because that was giving me my recommendation. Like, for those that can stay, if they move forward with this, is it's okay? Even if there may not be a quorum, it's okay to continue with public hearings?
Sure, there should be a quorum. It looks like, I think there's only two commissioners that need to leave early. So, yes, there should be a quorum. And we're not taking action today.
Madam, that's why I was getting ready for clarification, just to be prepared for public comment. But, Madam Chair, I'm going to go on record right now. Commissioner Zadovsky, you keep inferring that you will sit here for hours. This is the first time that I have ever requested this in 18 years. No, wait, let me finish. You've had your say all day today.
I'm just simply saying that I would be here.
But you are inferring that to the public and that is totally wrong.
That's not it, not at all.
This is something that I cannot get out of.
I have no problem with that.
Wait a minute, may I finish?
I'm just trying to get it on the record.
And I don't mind listening to the public, but I do not want the commissioners... That's what we got. This meeting was called 48 hours ago. Not even that, if you want to know the truth. And everybody has changed their schedules accordingly, the best of their ability. So for the public, to be inferred to them that you will sit here for hours and listen, so would all the rest of us, and we've proven that. So I don't want that impression given out by...
That's not what I'm trying to do, just saying no.
Sir, I have no problem with listening to you till 11:30.
Madam Chair, and I think that's exactly it. Everybody who's here can actually review the recording. So you'll have the opportunity to do that. I know that you have never missed a meeting of importance unless it's been absolutely necessary. So I want to make sure that's clear, that that's not my position, that anybody that has to go, has to go. I have no problem with that at all. But I'm willing to make sure that I can sit here and let them speak so that if they have an audience, and then each of you will be able to review the tape afterward. And then we can continue the discussion on Wednesday with all that already in play. So that'll take out some of the conversation that'll have to happen on Wednesday and maybe move the meeting along a little faster on Wednesday. So I'm trying to be useful of the time that we've already gotten in. Have those commissioners who need to leave do just that. I'm okay with that. And again, this is recorded and it'll be part of the record. And it'll be in place so that anybody who has to go can view it. So I don't hold... No, not at all. I'm sorry that that's how it was taken initially, but that's not it at all. I just want to be able to move this along so that Wednesday, this public comment will already be completed.
Okay. So, Mr. McIntyre, after the general public comment, the regular agenda won't...
We'll be deferring that to Wednesday.
It's going to defer it to Wednesday.
July 1st.
Okay. So now we're back to the conversation that we've had. So I need somebody to make a recommendation or a motion as to what they would like to do.
Mr. McIntyre, do we need a motion? I think that we can make a motion.
Or we can just move on?
I think we can just move on. If it seems like a majority of the board or all the board wants to open for public comment, we'll do that and take everybody that's here that wants to speak. They're three minutes. And then when we get through with that, we'll defer the action until July 1st at 2:00 p.m. Those commissioners that have to leave, that have prior commitments because of the emergency of the emergency scheduling, will leave.
Okay.
And then as a vice chair, I can take over and manage the...
Right, because I do have to leave. I have something I couldn't get out of either later today. And I shifted stuff around for the morning time. So I apologize, I will not be able to stay here and listen to all of you. But I will review the tapes, just like I have read my emails and listened to my messages. And again, I think it's important that you're here, but we're just trying to move all these parts with COVID. And I know that there's a lot of anxiety and everything else happening out there. So we're going to go ahead and move forward then, and I'm going to open up to public comment. And whenever I have to leave, Mr. McIntyre, I'll pass the gavel to Vice Chair Commissioner Zadovsky. So we will... But it's very important for everybody to understand that we cannot engage in conversation from the dais. So when you come, public comment is strictly your three minutes to state your opinion. You have to be held accountable to the three minutes. At the three minutes, if you're still talking and the buzzer goes off, you have to end your conversation. And it is three minutes, so please adhere to that. So if you'd like to come over here to the podium and state your name for the record, and you can begin, please.
I'm sorry, everybody. Perfect, perfect. I want to say, first off, thank you to Chris for doing your oath. The rest of you sound like a bunch of tyrants. But anyway, my name's Michael. I go by Solo Yacker on YouTube. You can look this up too after you're done. Declaration of Independence. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal. They are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights. That among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. The Constitution. We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our prosperity, do ordain, establish this Constitution of the United States of America. Title 18, 242, deprivation of rights. You should know this, Dan over there. It makes it a crime for a person under the color of law to willfully deprive a person or a person of a right or privilege protected by the Constitution or laws of the United States. Punishments. The punishments are up to a year imprisonment or fine or both. If bodily injury occurs, you can be fined or put in prison up to 10 years. If death is a result, you can be fined, put in prison for any amount of years, or put to death. Warren versus District of Columbia. The police do not owe a specific duty to protect us. If this gentleman over here has no duty to protect us, none of you all on this panel have any protection to do anything for me. I have the ability to do what I want, when I want, how I want. This is our country, not your country. It is not your job to tell me what to do, put on a mask. If you want to give health risk and blah, 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 tell people, hey, this is a service. Stay at home, wear a mask. That's all you can do. You want to start mandating people to wear stuff? Trust me. These guys probably already know who I am because I walk around here with an AR-15. All right? I will audit you day in and day out. I see any of you without a mask on, I will personally call the police on you, just so that you get that fine. Because if you guys can't even abide by your own rules, then I'm going to sit here and audit you. Especially you Cathy and especially you Franny. Franny, you're a tyrant, a tyrant. I don't care, you need to go. And for anybody here, this is election year. Get all these people, except for this guy Chris. Chris, he seems like he's doing a good job, but the rest of them? Yeah, tell them, tell them, that's all we hear is blah, 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 blah. That's all I'm hearing from all these people. Dan, you should be actually telling these people that they can't mandate this. There's four counties that are still under the state of emergency, and St. Lucie County ain't one of them. If you want to see all that stuff, go to Palm Beach, Monroe, Miami-Dade, and Broward. So honor your oath and stop being a bunch of tyrants, except for this guy Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you for not being a tyrant, dude. Appreciate that.
Is there somebody else that would like to speak?
Crash, dude, I swear.
That'd be nice.
Oh, Kentucky, you guys are going to sing.
Is there anybody else that would like to come forward? Please do so right now.
Yeah, can we tell them that?
Somebody left their phone.
You left... Mr. Michael?
Somebody left their phone. Appreciate that, man.
Yeah, we need to tell them that.
Yeah. And when you come up here, I know that's going to be kind of difficult, but we're going to have to sanitize them between each of you. So if you could stand back and just not touch the podium, that would help cut some of the time down. Good morning, how are you?
Hi, good morning. I, excuse me, promise to be a little less animated than that. First off, thank you guys for your time. My name's Kyle Green. I own Kyle G's Prime Seafood and Steaks out on Hutchinson Island. And since we reopened, we've brought back all 160 of our employees. We probably have some of the largest guest counts in the community. We've mandated, or not mandated, but we followed all the CDC guidelines as far as social distancing. We've always run good health and safety practices as far as... Excuse me.
Need some water?
If possible, yeah. Thank you. So we've always run a very clean restaurant based on the food code, health department. And one of the things that we first learn in food service is hand washing. In food service, you learn about HACCP plans. Learn about how to prevent foodborne illnesses. Viruses is one of them. Hepatitis A is certainly one of the most prevalent ones. And one of the things you learn is proper hand washing and good personal hygiene is the best way to do it. Gloves are single-use. And in the Serve Safe book, it says that gloves are no substitute for hand washing. Hearing from these incredibly educated medical professionals today, I don't want to argue that. There's no way to argue that. My restaurant has not been wearing masks. I've had one confirmed case out of my 160 team members about two weeks ago, as I was sitting here today. Excuse me, I don't usually like this.
That's okay. It's nervous.
It could be, especially after the animation earlier. Of my 160, just sitting here today, I got another negative case. I've had another 10 or 12 negative cases come back from people that didn't have symptoms, but they were just curious of, you know, hey, we had one in the building. I guess I service about 400 to 500 guests a day because we have a very large footprint with the inside and outside. If anyone's been to the restaurant, it's a large building. And I know there's restaurants in the community that have a much smaller staff. They have a much smaller guest count. And many of them are voluntarily closing because their case count's getting very high. So I'm not saying, nor arguing, the medical professionals that came before me. I just want to make sure that if we're mandating masks or face coverings, we're educating the community on how to do them, like gloves are single-use. I've seen people, I had a guest yesterday come in, wearing gloves, wearing masks, smoked a pack of cigarettes, went to the bathroom three times, never changed her gloves, never washed her hands. That is incredible cross-contamination. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Henry Duhart, resident of Fort Pierce, Florida. Just to speak to a few things just about that I've observed. Appreciate a lot of the comments I've heard come from Mr. Zadovsky concerning just staying here and listening to us and letting people voice their opinion, even if there's a time constriction. Also, I desperately believe that, you know, I don't think this is the current political climate. If you've really been out into this community mandating or making anything mandatory, I think it's kind of not the way to go currently right now. I believe maybe within some of the county facilities, especially the staffers who work very closely, that can be something that you guys have the power to do, especially if you provide those particular masks and sanitations. I've found that with a lot of things we've been doing lately, such as the rallies that we've been having, the marches we've been having, the events, some even voter registration events we've been having, it's much better to lead by example than to mandate things. I find that more people are more reliant to following those particular rules of wearing a mask. I myself have worn a mask everywhere I go, but I don't think it's because I mandated it. It's just because I'm just kind of leading by example. And that goes a long way with, you know, just people really feeling like accepting something that is what we need to be doing without making them feel like you're taking away their rights. But for me personally, I just hope that you guys listen to the public comments, review the public comments. I appreciate everyone who stayed as well during the public comments. You know, and to continue just, you know, listening to what the people have to say and really considering what they're saying before making any decisions. I think people are really tired of them coming to speak to you during public comment and you just going exactly the opposite of what they say. I understand sometimes you have insight that we don't have, but also sometimes it's really important to really take this public comment section as the most important part of the agenda. Because without it, you know, more of a democracy. But public comment is very important. Again, I appreciate you guys for continuing to stay here. I just want to make sure that I speak to that, you know, I will be here at the next meeting and I hope that we make the right decision as a county to really, you know, represent. But I really feel strongly that we don't have to mandate really much of anything. We lead by example. And maybe use social media and all the other tools that I don't necessarily always see us use to really get the message out there. A lot of it is just a lack of education about, you know, gloves. That's one thing, people think gloves is the best way, and a lot of times that's even worse. It can contaminate things more. So I think just a way that we can use social media, use you guys as different outlets to just mass educate people on the proper way of using it. And you find that people will kind of find their own way and they have more pride and unity when we work together that way. So just leading by example is pretty, pretty effective. And if you're going to ask for masks, you might want to wear them. So I will hope that in the next meeting that you guys wear the mask or at least have them close to the ear. Because a lot of times perception, people only see you guys standing. They don't see that there's a mask on your desk. So I think just certain perceptions is really what causes a lot of friction sometimes. So, again, Henry Duhart, I appreciate this time and just the opportunity to say something.
Thank you. Good morning.
Can you hear me okay with this? Okay. My name's Gina. Good morning.
Ma'am, I need your last name too, please.
Oh, Andrea Akio, sorry.
Can you spell that for the...
Oh, sure.
Are you have it? She filled it up, okay, perfect, thank you.
I'm here today to express my support towards mandatory masks in public. I believe everyone, both workers and those visiting a public area, should wear facial coverings. I have seen numerous scientific articles claiming masks are helpful and others claiming the opposite. I personally feel the major point of facial coverings is being missed. Common sense will tell us that a few layers of cotton is not an appropriate filtration device for any airborne contaminants. What they are appropriate for is preventing the disgusting particles that fling indiscriminately from everyone's mouths from ending up anywhere near surrounding persons. They protect not only you, but everyone around you. It's frustrating to see how incredibly selfish some are during this time. I am appalled and disgusted that some can believe a minor inconvenience of wearing a mask outweighs the risk of infecting someone with this virus. It is absolutely one's own right with how they treat their own body. However, you no longer may claim "my body, my choice" when it comes to affecting others by spreading this virus. Ironic that some are choosing to use that phrase now. I will surmise by stating I believe covering our face is an extremely small inconvenience that can greatly enhance our safety. And I will end saying I would wear a mask indefinitely if necessary to protect myself and all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Sound check. My name's Craig Passananti. My main concern is, I work at the Walmart distribution center practically right down the road. We service 110 different stores, maybe 111. Six or seven of them are around this county. Our company's been mandating masks since, I believe, March 17th. So we go through thermal scans, body temperature. If we trigger that, then we get our temperature checked, we have our masks. We practice social distancing there. Without breaking any kind of HIPAA, they are very transparent with us if any associates have coronavirus or tested positive. And we are up to somewhere between eight and 11 cases of employees at that distribution center. Now, they haven't contracted it at the distribution center, but they're contracting it somewhere. Unlike, you know, the WWE or whatever that was considered... Unlike, you know, the WWE or whatever that was considered an essential job. Uh, we, we are. Um, you know, if we shut down, 110 stores don't get freight, they don't get food or, you know, whatever else you may need. So wearing a mask out in public, you know, I go shopping at Walmart store, half of them don't wear masks. Not only is the mask not for you, it's for everybody else. And everybody wearing it helps, you know, curb that problem, even if it's only a 20 or 30% help, you know, you want that extra help. It's risking the employees that have to go back to this distribution center to provide for the county. I'm sure there are other stores, but obviously they're going through the same thing. Once our distribution center shuts down, six stores will get no freight. As soon as coronavirus is said to be in that warehouse, our warehouse has to shut down. Um, we shut down, we have, um, a procedure that if it's tested positive in the warehouse, we shut down for two weeks. Now, we ship freight every single night to all the stores. I mean, to me, that's a no-brainer. Uh, if you go to the store, I mean, we had that toilet paper crisis earlier. Yeah, you, I'm sure everybody was. Yeah, we, we have it now. Um, but yeah, I'm sure everybody has been part of, even like during hurricane seasons when there's no food on the shelves. Now imagine that for two weeks just because our actual distribution center isn't working. Um, I heavily support mandated masks. Uh, the second to last representative, um, I completely understand that, you know, mandating things in this time is, you know, it's, I, I get that. Um, and leading by example is huge. Um, obviously you guys are six feet apart practicing social distancing, you know. Because some people are inconsiderate of others or also may not be educated enough. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a serious health problem. I cannot wear a mask.
Sir, I need you.
A mask will.
Sir, I need you to state your name for the record.
Okay, Richard Olazol. And these tests have been made, masks will diminish your oxygen level that you bring into your body by 3%. That goes from 20% to 17%. And if you wanna be sick, you wanna lower your oxygen level. And if you wanna be sick, you wanna be scared, you wanna be terrified. And that test, that PCR test they're using for this virus was created by a man called Kerry Mullis. And Kerry Mullis emphatically stated, this, these tests cannot be used to detect free infectious viruses. Maybe that's why everybody's testing positive and nobody's getting sick. It's a bogus test. And we shut down the world on the basis of this bogus test and we're gonna, we're gonna muzzle me like a mad dog? Damn, you people oughta be ashamed of yourselves to believe all these lies. And look at the, look at the death rate of the United States over this last flu season. It's less than it was last flu, uh, this, this flu season. It's less than it was last flu season. And look all over Europe the same way. The death rate is actually a mild one for a flu season. That's what we need to look at. How many people are dying and how many people are dying of this? Not of heart attacks and cancer and strokes and everything else, and then we chalk it up to COVID. That is sick. We are being lied to, our freedoms are being taken forever, and I will not be muzzled like a mad dog. And I will not have my health destroyed because you idiots can't figure, can't read truth. You go along with the lies that are the people who are trying to take down our freedoms and destroy our country. This is sick. You oughta be ashamed of yourself for being a part of this, and I will not be muzzled. And it's time for us to stand up for our freedoms. If we stand back against these pieces of crap, handle our freedoms, we will have nothing left. In fact, we'll end up being dead.
And Madam Chair, if I could, uh, offer, we appreciate the passion, but, um, as you're talking into the microphone, it's gonna modulate. So you may not be heard by those at home, so louder you get, the more modulate the, the sound.
I can't help it.
No, that's okay. I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure you get it across that your position actually can be heard.
Hello.
Good morning.
Lisa Triplet and, um, I'm definitely an anti-mask family for a lot of different reasons. I actually have a few number of my family in a healthcare and I speak to them regularly, ask for their advice. Um, and they are actually saying for the, for the studies that they've done as well, uh, the masks, uh, lower the oxygen rate. Um, a lot of people are not, as some of the other people mentioned, they're not wearing them properly. Feel like they're only used for one time. What happens is you got cross-contamination. So that's, um, that's a lot as well. Um, I would also like to mention that the mask also because you're, you're not exposing yourself. Like, you know, like when we were younger, we were all exposed to chickenpox. Our parents always exposed us to chickenpox, so we would be immune to it. It's the same thing for me as a parent, if I'm taking my kids out, washing my hands, trying to do the other safety precautions, um, instead of wearing a mask because the mask actually lowers your immune systems. There was a study, um, by a guy, I think it was OSHA guy, I just watched a video just recently on Facebook where he, uh, did a little test tube of the oxygen levels in a mask and how it's, it's actually illegal how far down the oxygen levels go when you're wearing a mask. I think it was about 17, uh, we're supposed to be, uh, 19 or 20. So it's, it's crazy how, and that's not even counting if somebody was to wear a mask while exercising or whatever. So, and back to the, you know, trying to mandate the mask on employers, I think that should be based on what the employers feel. It's the power to the people, the people should have their, uh, right, the employer should have their right to decide what works best for them and their environment. Um, so I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Paul Carroll. And I've been around in Florida since 75. I'm a wastewater inspector, been doing it for 34 years, checking out septic tanks in nearly 20 counties. I've been raised on the farm. I spent many years in Haiti as well. I like to think I'm pretty well inoculated from a lot of viruses. I'm not one of those that gets sick a lot. But try to put a mask on me and try to work, it isn't gonna work. And to sit here and mandate that employers require their employees to wear masks. I was just talking to a waitress the other day in a local restaurant. She goes, "I can't breathe with this thing." She goes, "I've noticed since I've been wearing the mask." She says, "I'm more fatigued." She's tired more. That is due to the fact, the lack of oxygen. You've got to have oxygen, sufficient oxygen. Our bodies were created in a way to develop immunity systems to fight off things. And if we live in a stereotype world or we wear a mask, we're not building immunities. And, you know, I heard earlier that this wasn't political. It's funny how it came right in the medical, in the middle of an election year when we've had countless viruses down through 244 years of this country. And we have never shut down the economy. We have never mandated people to wear a mask. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. I'm not against anyone wanting to wear it. If you feel that you're sick or you don't wanna contaminate somebody else, wear a mask. But don't ask me to wear a mask, 'cause I, like, I put up a post the other day on Facebook. Those that are pushing other people to wear a mask, I'm gonna perceive you wearing a mask as like a baby with a blanket or you're a pacifier or you're a teddy bear. If that's what makes you comfortable, then by all means do it. Don't push your ideology over onto me as an employer or onto employees or onto the citizens. Let the people use their own intelligence. And what I'm concerned about, you talk about the recent spike in the coronavirus. Have you noticed prior to that, people weren't wearing masks at first? Then here comes the coronavirus and start wearing masks. Now all of a sudden we get a spike. What happens, you're getting, people getting a redish around the mouth, people are getting upper respiratory problems due to the fact that they can't get enough oxygen into their lungs, cause them to have other symptoms, off to the hospital they go, diagnosed as coronavirus and up go our numbers. It, to me, in my opinion, it's all agenda-driven. And I'm just, I'm not gonna wear a mask. I just can't. I work outdoors, I'm a farm boy, I need air. And I'm done.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Good morning.
Good morning. Um, Jade Schaefer, Port St. Lucie. Um, you know, to the gentleman's point before, I, I definitely wanna bring up initially that, um, actually the test that is under the CDC, the COVID-19 test that is, actually picks up four other strains of coronavirus, one that includes the common cold. So whether you've had it in the past, present, or asymptomatic. With that being said, perhaps these cloth masks are getting people sicker. So basically people may have the common cold and come in a positive for COVID-19. It's a possibility. So like I said, good morning. Um, in April, when the CDC reversed course and the end, it became the recommendation based on the recent studies regarding asymptomatic carriers and several, several elected officials took this mandate rather than a recommendation. Um, it is clear it does not protect the wearer, but it protects others. This collective thought process makes not one ounce of sense whatsoever. If cloth masks worked, healthcare workers would be wearing them, but they're not. These for-profit hospitals led by CEOs like Rob Lord are in the business of treating sick people. They do not make money without sick patients. They are in the business of being sick. If cloth masks worked, we would not be seeing an increase in cases. Looking at the numbers in St. Lucie County, while we did have a slight uptick, it does not in any way necessitate such draconian measures like mask-wearing. Broward and Miami-Dade have had mask orders in place since April, yet their cases continue to increase. Um, okay, why? Because cloth masks just don't work. People are using masks more as a fashion accessory than anything else, as we can see in some of you in this room. Um, as, as recently as March, we, we were retouching, we were re-teaching folks basic hand washing skills to adults. But yet we expect them to now, to know, actually know how to properly wear, use, and sanitize a cloth mask. We now have the same expectation from children as young as two. Is the two-year-old expected to sneeze and cough into the mask? Do they keep wearing it out or continue to breathe in the germs that their body rejected? Same for any age, but for kids, what is your expectation of how to keep these sanitary? If you are in a situation where you have a condition that makes you susceptible, then you need to stay home. This is also another recommendation from the CDC that people over the age of 65 and those with underlying health, health issues should stay home. Why isn't this recommendation enforced, but masks should be? If this commission wants to mandate masks for businesses, businesses should be providing surgical masks then to their patrons and employees. These are the only effective masks to slow the spread. So we don't burden the businesses, businesses with this additional cost. The commission should allocate funds received from the CARES Act to absorb the cost of fulfilling this requirement. A cloth mask is simply useless, and if the county mandates this, then I would hope you launch education efforts regarding proper and effective use of masks. But you all will probably will not do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Uh, my name is James Classby and I'm a concerned citizen and a voter here in St. Lucie County. I just wanted to start by saying thank you for having public comment. Uh, myself, I had to take half of a day, probably now a full day PTO, uh, just to be here. It's that important to me. Uh, my only request is that if we do have a face covering order, please let it come from our elected officials and not from county administration. This is something that should be occurring in the sunshine and with public discussion being taken into account. Thank you and have a great day.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Lorna Allen and I just, first of all, wanna go in the record saying that I do not agree with this mask, mandatory mask. If someone wants to wear a mask, I think that should be their decision. If you're sick, go ahead, by all means, wear your mask. If you think, if you're, and if you're sick too, stay home, be quarantined. But if you're healthy, why should you be quarantined? I don't agree with this and I just wanted clear that this is just a violation of our rights and I'm not giving up any more of my rights. And as long as I can remember, we're still a free country and I go with my freedom all the time. And also, on another note, if we could demonstrate and so-called demonstrate, you know, terrorize, whatever, and, and be not wearing a mask and nobody's saying anything, okay, why should we? We're just trying to go about our lives and who can make decision for ourselves be mandated to wear a mask? I will not. And thank you all, and I'll be voting.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Y'all can hear me? Okay, uh, good morning. I'm, uh, Lonzo Watkins, I'm here in Fort Pierce. I'm coming to you guys to try to find out what effect would this have on Fort Pierce? Where we do have a lot of our poor and under, um, uh, developed side of, of, of St. Lucie County. Um, you're mandating masks for, for, let me get this one off. We're mandating the mask for, um, for the, uh, for the county, but a lot of our people in Fort Pierce cannot, do not have the money to buy masks. And we're suffering in a recession, a lot of, a lot of people in Fort Pierce has unemployment also. So three masks, these, these kinda masks cost $10. A lot of them cannot actually buy these masks to, to fit the mandate that, uh, that the county will, uh, put on there. So can you think about how we can give everybody masks first, uh, if you wanna mandate this, uh, into the low and, um, poor communities? That's all I, I'd like to say. Um, can you please look into that? Because before we have another incident of injustice or police coming up to, to harass and we don't wanna have another situation to bring that bad luck on this county and our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to come forward? Good morning.
Uh, good morning. Uh, Bo Slay. Um, I manage Moon Swiner's Barbecue. Um, just, just a quick comment. Um, it's the mandatory part of this that is the issue, right? And I don't, I don't think any of us are saying that people shouldn't wear masks if they feel the need to, right? If it makes you feel safer, then more power to you. Well, when America was, when America was shut down, we were asked to flatten the curve to avoid a breakdown of our healthcare system. We did that. No place in this country ran out of beds or ventilators. They were makeshift hospitals set up all over the country and never used. America did its part and flattened the curve. Is there an increase in cases? Yes. We have also done over 25 million tests. That's 20 million plus more tests than the next country behind us. Most of these new cases are people 18 to 40 and most are asymptomatic with very little chance of death. Also, as the confirmed cases go up, the mortality rate keeps falling. Imagine that. The mortality rate is almost down to flu-type numbers, which is where we knew it was all along. The CDC just came out and said probably 10 times more people have likely had COVID than have been confirmed. If that's the case, then it's less deadly than the flu. Main point is, we were asked to flatten the curve and we did that. The healthcare system has plenty of beds and ventilators. We are far more prepared to handle this uptick than we were four months ago. There's no reason for any local government to mandatorily make their citizens wear masks, especially when it's not mandated by the president or our governor. It's overreach and infringement of people's personal rights. If someone wants to wear a mask, that's their right, more power to them. But they don't have the right to mandate that I wear one. If someone is worried about catching COVID or they have underli, underlying issues, it's probably best to stay home. We as a business have, have been open the entire time. So when you say businesses, I've been open. I'm slammed. I've been hiring people. So why you wanna sit there and talk about we can trace back to businesses and find out who's not being responsible is BS. Restaurants are the safest places people can be at, right? We're mandated from top to bottom. I have health inspectors that will only eat at my restaurant and nowhere else because of the cleanliness of it. I have provided masks for every one of my employees and if they so choose to wear one, that is their right. I'm not gonna force them to do so. I'm not gonna force any one of my patrons to come in there and have to wear a mask. That is their right. If they don't wanna eat inside our facility, I have plenty of options for them. I have takeout, I have curbside, I have drive-through. People can order food and have it shipped to their houses now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Good morning.
Oh, I'm the CEO, President of the nonprofit, um, Brain Cancer, The Treasure Coast. I've also been a public health nurse for 20 years.
Um, excuse me, I know who you are, but everybody else needs to know who you are.
Okay. So my name is Stephanie Ankiel. Um, the problem is, nobody likes to be told what to do and I get that. I really, I'm, I'm, I don't like to be told what to do, but the problem is, I know, I know we've had cases, they've been tested positive and unfortunately they go out in the public. And that's the issue. So they're infecting other people. Um, I do feel bad for the businesses because they don't know their personal situation. They don't know if that person is positive and they go into that restaurant, either working as a, uh, you know, consumer. They don't know if that person is positive and they go into that restaurant either working as a, you know, consumer. And that's what's going to happen. That's why we can't stop the spread. And as far as like the local hospitals, as of last week, we haven't had any ICU beds available. So that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're closing public comment. So we were able to hear everybody. So again, I think all of us agree that it's important for you to be here and we appreciate that you're here. We're just trying to make sure everybody is heard, which is the point of this whole meeting, I think, in having the public comment conversation. I also want to say that I, I do, I think it's need to summarize a few things. You're all passionate about this and I, you're passionate for and against, but I know there, there were accusations made assuming that we all supported this mandated thing. At this time, I don't know that any of us have really stated how we feel and if we are going to be for or against it. So I, I hope that you are encouraged by what happened today, that you'll, if you can't be here Wednesday, you'll at least watch or go back and watch the meeting. It's going to be, I know, taking over a lot of prayer and a lot of debate and a lot of education on my part for me to be able to get to where I'm going to go at the end of the day. So at this time, I guess, Mr. Tipton, you'll be doing the emergency order for the building and we will come back, Mr. McIntyre, July?
July, it's, it's Wednesday, July 1st at 2:00 PM in this, in this chamber.
Okay.
And we will be sending out new notices as well.
And so it's important for everybody to, to be heard, which is why I think it was the majority of the board's decision to move this forward so that more could have the right. I do want to clarify two things, though. According to the man, if it, if it does happen, there is exemptions in place if you have a mental condition, you do not wear the mask. And if you are under the age of two years old, you do not have to wear the mask. So I think it's important, we have information that I know the community is not purveyed to at all times. And so I think it's important for you to understand that those are two criterias put into this suggestion and those are exempt. So for the mental conditions and under the age of two, they are exempt from having to do this, should the board decide to go that, that direction. So.
As well as social distancing, outside.
Right. So, and that was the other thing, that if you can social distance, then the mask is not going to be mandatory too. So these are all conversations we're going to bring up, we're going to elaborate and we're going to talk about on Wednesday. We can't get into it unfortunately right now because we're moving forward. I want to thank the board for everybody's input, Mr. McIntyre, your leadership and, and do you have any closing?
One statistic was brought out that 80% of the people that are, are infected are asymptomatic. And that's really what the issue is. We don't know who is actually carrying and spreading. So it's the asymptomatic individuals is where this conversation is, is really where the, the problem is. We don't know who and they could have somebody that's just carrying. It's just like going back to the HIV. You know, you don't see somebody and just say, oh, they automatically have HIV or AIDS or some other infection. In this case, you know, simply asymptomatic folks are carrying and they're spreading. And that's why we're trying to at least, you know, create some mechanism. And so that's, that's really the, the challenge we have.
And I think that it's going to be a lot of conversation on Wednesday. I think there's going to be a lot of points brought out. I think there's going to be a lot of businesses weighing in on this. And for me, I wanted the opportunity to let you all have your voice heard. So I'm totally confident that we're going to get there and I, I'm glad that you were here today. I know many of you that have businesses, you're taking time away from your restaurants. Again, I want to say thank you and everybody, please enjoy your weekend and I will entertain a motion to adjourn. But Mr. McIntyre, do you have anything before we close out?
You don't, that's why it's exempt. Can we finish the meeting? No ma'am, I don't have anything further.
Okay.
Do, do we, we're trying to do a meeting.
Yeah, we're trying to have a meeting and we can't do this.
Okay, so.
Ma'am, we're, I apologize, but you really have to contain, this is all recorded and for legal purposes. Everything stated has to be on the record for legal purposes.
So, Mr. McIntyre, you indicated that we needed a motion. You started to, to craft language that would be appropriate for a motion earlier. Yes, I, I would just suggest that the board go ahead and move to continue this hearing to Wednesday, July the 1st at 2:00 PM or sooner after in these chambers, but that they also direct staff to make sure that the notice of the, of the meeting is, even though it's being continued, is also circulated in, in the website and however we were posting, however we normally post meetings so that we'll get maximum notice out to the public.
Madam Chair, so moved.
There you go. Second.
Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll? Commissioner Hutchinson? She had to leave. Commissioner Bart?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
And Sheriff Townsend?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Okay, so for those of you that can make it back on Wednesday, it's going to be at 2:00 in the afternoon. And Mr. Tipton, do you have anything you'd like to say before we leave? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for being here.